We're going to call the main order because we do have some housekeeping business to take care of. First on the agenda is the swearing in of the elected board members. And we have four tonight that will be taking their oath. And Judge Wallace is here to administer the oath.
All right, I'm going to come forward. I'm just going to talk state to state, is that okay to the group? Don't raise your hands. I state your name.
Lieutenant James.
Of Stewart County, Tennessee.
Stewart County, Tennessee.
After having been certified by the Stewart County Election Commission.
After being certified by the Stewart County Election Commission.
As having been duly elected.
As being duly elected.
As a school board member.
As a school board member.
Of Stewart County, Tennessee.
Of Stewart County, Tennessee.
Hereby solemnly swear.
Hereby solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
Fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
Which I've been elected.
In which I'm about to assume.
In which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions.
To support the constitutions.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
A school board member.
A school board member.
Of Board of Education.
Board of Education.
Representing your district.
Representing District Five.
Of Stewart County, Tennessee.
Of Stewart County, Tennessee.
So how we got.
So how we got.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Allen Secretary, if you could roll call please.
Mr. Gill.
Here.
Ms. Lamm.
Here.
Mr. Morgan.
Here.
Mr. Dacus.
Here.
Ms. Bitchu.
Here.
Ms. Sanders.
Here.
All right, we have six county board in the present. Next item on the agenda is the election of the chairman of the board, vice chairman of the board, and the TLM representative. We will start with nominations for chairman of the school board.
I nominate Bobby Morgan.
Second.
Nomination of Mr. Bobby Morgan and a second, any others? This is a long call. Okay, we need to do a roll call please, since there's no other nominees. Ma'am Secretary.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lamm.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Dacus.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to you.
All right, I thank y'all for.
Vice Chairman, you're next.
Right. I thank y'all for your continued support. The next step will be the vice chairman. Do y'all have any nominations for that? Lisa Bitchu.
Second.
Second, second by Mr. Dacus. There any others? Lisa, you okay with that? All right, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lamm.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Dacus.
Yes.
Ms. Bitchu.
Stand.
All right.
Ms. Sanders.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lisa, vice chairman.
Thank you.
She wants to say some words. All right, the TLM representative. I think Lana has done that for the last, I don't know, several years. Does anybody want to.
Motion for law.
I think Lana's done a great job. I think she should, yes.
Will.
Yes.
Got a motion from Mr. Dacus and a second from Ms. Bitchu. Are there any others? All right, let's go ahead and have a roll call on that as well.
Ms. Bitchu, yes. Ms. Sanders. Mr. Gillum.
Yes.
Mr. Lamm.
Yes.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Mr. Dacus.
Yes.
All right, that's item four. Item five is the open public comment. I've got five names. Before you come up, I'm going to remind everybody of the rules for addressing the board, which is you'll get up and you'll state your name and address, and then what you're going to talk about. You have five minutes. You address the chair. It's a statement by you. It's, there doesn't have to be any commentary by anybody afterward. That's, that's not, that's not how the board policy works. But you address me, and then you have five minutes. So I'm going to start with Ms. Debbie Crutcher.
Chairman, my name is Deborah Crutcher. I live at eight, five, eight Keel Hollow Road here in Dover, Tennessee. And I want to discuss tonight our bus driver shortage and the opportunity to subteach at the school between our routes. The bus driver shortage in Stewart County is a mounting problem. It isn't happening just here, but all over the country. All you need to do is watch your local and national news. Drivers complain of low wages and poor working conditions. Prices on everything, as you know, has gone up, and bus drivers are having to look for ways to supplement their income. Some will be forced to leave the job that they love simply because they cannot meet their financial needs by driving a school bus. For some of us, our bus pay is the only income we have. You cannot make a living on what we make. Besides initial classroom and field training, transportation employees are required annually to complete an eight-hour update of first aid training and emergency medication training. We must be certified every two years in CPR. Drivers are subject to multiple drug and alcohol screening throughout the year and must complete a DOT physical not every two years, as do other CDL drivers, but every year. We are not only responsible for transporting students safely, but we must also communicate effectively with students, parents, and administrators. This year alone, we started our school year at a deficit of bus drivers. You may have read the article in the Standard a few weeks ago. The statement was made that all routes were covered. The truth is, these routes are temporarily covered. We have four routes that are currently being covered by temporary drivers. One route has, has had to been absorbed by other, within other routes, resulting in overcrowded buses. Because of our transportation director, Mr. Eric Watkins, these retired bus drivers, out of respect and loyalty to him, agreed to drive a bus temporarily. These individuals want to and will go back to being retired. Our mechanics have to fill in and drive most days, which result in them, it keeps them from doing their jobs at the garage. Even if new drivers were hired today, it could take up to four months to complete the required training, maybe longer, before they would be able to take a route. For the school bus driver shortage to get better, the overall staffing situation must improve. Also, the structural problem related to low wages for school bus drivers must be addressed. In a free labor market where workers are free to choose their jobs, labor needs to be rewarded to retain the workforce. The truth is, Stewart County is in trouble. We are at a critical place right now. We have excellent bus drivers now that will retire soon. Some will leave for better pay. As of last Friday, we had two people call for applications but didn't even bother to come pick those up. We had one who was in training, but soon decided that this job was not for him. As of today, we have one individual who is actively training. Now is the time to staunch this flow, but so far, a Band-Aid has been placed on an aneurysm. This situation didn't just come about overnight, it's been coming for a long time. The power to change course is at your feet. You have the means to make driving for Stewart County more appealing. My boss, Mr. Eric, has done everything he can do with what he's been given to work with. There is nothing left that he can do. Several of us want to substitute teach at our schools. We want to be considered for full-time work status. But according to this school board's policy, up until yesterday, we were only allowed to sub two days out of each week. Since yesterday, it was agreed that we could substitute for three and a half days. Are you aware, when the school needs a substitute teacher and they can't find one, students must go to the gym for that hour of classroom time without teacher instruction?
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to.
Okay, I'm almost done.
All right.
Just give me just two minutes.
Ma'am.
Thank you. If the bus drivers were allowed to sub when needed, it's a win-win for everybody. They get instruction, the bus driver can supplement their pay. We're sitting there in the parking lot, we're not burning fuel, going back and forth. Going home and then coming back. We're already there. I do appreciate everything that's been done, Mr. Craig, I honestly do. For us so far, but we may be in the same neighborhood, but we are not on the same street yet. There's only four of us that want to subteach, only four. Mr. Eric did a survey. That's going to cost you about $8,000 per person to get us full-time. That's what I'm asking. I want to be able to subteach between my routes every day of the week, not just three, which would require a full-time status. And there's only four of us that's asking for that position. Thank you, Director.
All right, Allen Shepard.
I'll remind you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Allen Shepard. I live at one seven five Belfort Road, Dover, Tennessee. I am a school bus driver for Stewart County. First, I would like to thank Mr. Craig, Mr. Glenn, and the school board for reinstatement of attendance for this and updating, updating it to help more bus drivers and working with us. But as you know, our school system and school systems around our country is having a major shortage. It's been a growing problem over the past few years. Anywhere you get your news, you see it. You drive down the road, you see a bus with a big banner on it, "Now Hiring Bus Drivers." That is what I'm here to talk to you today. A school bus driver is a professional driver. With a commercial driver's license, must be at least 25 years of age with a clean motor vehicle record. Go through a federal background check. Be first aid and CPR certified. We have to have a DOT physical every year and a school bus endorsement every year. As a bus driver, we are responsible for transporting our students safely to and from school. We must perform pre-trip and post-trip inspections of a bus's life status. We have to keep our buses clean inside and out. As a bus driver, we are liable if something should happen to one of our students. With the new CDL regulations and laws that took place earlier this year, it has taken longer and harder for a bus driver to get a commercial driver's license, in some cases, months longer. Stewart County is four bus drivers short. That will eventually cause canceled routes. It has been avoided so far by the hard work of Eric Watkins, our transportation director, by getting retired bus drivers and mechanics to temporarily fill routes. This would cause issues if we do not have a mechanic in the shop, if we have a mechanical failure during the route. Could lead to kids sitting on the side of the road for extended period of time. So far, it hasn't been avoided by Eric. He has brought drivers as spare bus when this has happened, but leaves the office without anyone if we have another issue with the bus. And canceled routes end up with absentee students or parents losing hours of work transporting their kids to and from school. Some schools around us have more incentives for bus drivers. Better pay, attendance bonuses, benefits. Some of these include more hours of being able to work two positions within the school system or being full-time employees and retiring. But none of two school systems are alike. The county up their pay $2 an hour. It helped, but they are still struggling and are short on bus drivers. Other school systems that offer full-time, it has helped, but still struggle to find bus drivers. I'm asking the school board, school board's help to give more school bus drivers by offering more pay, benefits, more incentives. This would help our whole school system and Stewart County. The school board needs to get in front of this growing bus driver shortage that is happening. By helping bus drivers, you help our students get to school safely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kate Lefaez.
Hi, I'm Kate Lefaez. I live at three zero one Wyandotte Road in Big Rock, Tennessee. And thank you for letting me speak. Last time I came, I had a speech ready, but I didn't know the whole way to do the whole thing, you know? I just wanted to, you know, bring to the attention to not only the board, but actually our community, the need for bus drivers. And by handing out my resume, I wanted you to realize that we have staff that has skills that are bus drivers. And it used to be that you could have both positions. Like I said, and Obamacare stopped that from happening. So my whole hope was, is that you could reinstate all of that in order for you could utilize employees that you already have. My whole thing is, is that I was a single mom, and I had three kids. And I didn't, I couldn't afford a babysitter. And so I became a bus driver. And then I could become an aide. Because in Michigan, where I'm from, it's all union. And the only way you could get into the school system was through the back door, which was bus driving. So I was able to afford to take care of my children and have the same schedule as them and take care of them while I also took care of the kids in my family. So for me, I'm thinking that what a better way of going about it is letting us have two positions. Now, I'm not a single parent anymore. But we have an older, including me, because I'm on social security, we have an older generation of bus drivers. So to me, I got to look at what's going to bring in the youth? What's going to bring in the people that are going to take our places when we aren't doing this anymore? Well, if we offer something that's an incentive to families to stay in our community, to work with the children, to love the children like we do, because we love the children. Trust me, we wouldn't have 78 of them behind us while we're going down the road if we didn't love them. And we get to know all of them personally. And if you're working in the position of being able to do both jobs, then you have more opportunity. And that's just spreading more citizenship. Because if we work together, that's what citizens do. So that's what I'm asking for. And I'm hoping that I'm asking that for everyone in Stewart County, not just for myself. I would love to come back and do a full-time. I had to take a little bit of a rest. Because if you did read my resume, you know I was in the classroom. Sometimes you have to take a break from that. But I couldn't take a break from kids. So I was still a bus driver, and then I worked in the kitchen, and I did all of that, because I can't stay away from them. And a lot of times, that's how that goes. So my thought process is, how can we help with the bus driver shortage? Sure, benefits would be good, higher pay would be good. What we've worked on and have had success with in just a few short months has been absolutely outstanding. And I am so grateful for the work that we have done together and the compromises and the things that we've achieved in just the few meetings and the discussions that we've had. I can just hope and pray that you do consider letting us work more and that will bring the opportunity to the other people, the younger people, the mothers and the stay-at-home dads, to come and do the same thing that we do. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Audrey Jensen.
Okay, I'm Audrey Jensen. I live at one thirty-two Sixth Spring Street in Dover. So I'm just following up from when we, the initial meeting I went to, when I talked about school safety background in June sixth. Let me check people order ninety-seven minutes. I just kind of want to give an update of where we're at and what we've accomplished. At the beginning of this, I did a needs assessment. I talked to Mike, I talked to SROs, I talked to sheriff, I talked to a lot of community people, board members, a lot of people. And I also surveyed parents. And I got 71 parents participating in the survey. I'm going to email you all the results, there's lots of commentary in there to hear specific things. The results at this time aren't great, but I think what we have accomplished will address a lot of those concerns. So sixty-four percent of the 71 parents, and 71 seems small, but if you look at community survey for SRO, we only got, I think, 55. So this was participation for our community. So 71 parents, they felt sixty, sixty-four percent of those parents felt like the schools were not prepared for an active shooter situation. Staff were prepared. Forty percent or forty-five percent of parents were worried about their children attending school. But I think what we have accomplished will reassure parents because we have accomplished a lot in the last two months. So from what I gather, talking to all the parties, Mike's been very good about this policy review implementation. This is happening. I talked to SROs, they're on it, they are following up and making sure these are being, our policies are being implemented, that buildings are secure, you know, we are meeting the people at the door, they're not coming in. Doors are being shut, it's ongoing, it's a new thing that for our staff to get used to. There's some bad habits, but this is being implemented. There's also coordination for admin at each school with the SROs. And there's safety assessments, you know, to paraphrase what Mike said, he's like, I want to know the ugly, what are we, where are our soft spots? And we're having those candid conversations to address those. Our SROs spent 110 hours of active shooter training during their summer break. This was their time off. They spent 110 hours of active shooter training. Our SROs are top-notch. All our schools and bus drivers received stock the lead training, and all schools have tourniquets. This was free, a great community resource. And I believe Sergeant Morgan has gotten all our schools up to date with active shooter training for our teachers. And I know there's been some incidents where there might have been some scrutiny, but all I can say is if Sergeant Morgan says our schools are safe, they're safe. I guarantee you, he assessed the threat. He, if there was an actual intent or anything, it would have been addressed. But Sergeant Morgan says our schools are safe, then they're safe. Okay, so this is a little bit, I'm going to go into the budget. And we're doing budget minutes tonight, I'm not sure specifically what they're on. But I, this has to go back to special education. I'm a special education advocate. I work with 20-plus families in this community. Some of them are very small, we're just educating them on IDEA and IUPs, or some of them are larger. I can tell you that we are still falling short drastically. I'd say a lot of the same things that happened with my child are still happening. And the budget, we need to look at that. And also the policymaking board, but you guys also approved the budget. And we need to ask more questions and understand why are we falling short and spent? I can tell you, it's not because we don't have competent teachers. We have competent teachers. They're, we need more support there. We need to reevaluate and see what is the issue there. For SRO, we got three and a half million dollars. Point zero three percent of that, $15,000, went to special education. Fifteen percent, I think 14.8 percent of our population is special education. I was told, I don't remember, I believe with some of the public relief funds, special ed got money as well. I tried to look at the budget, but I don't think the county's budget's up to date for where we're at, including what we got for SRO. But I can say, our caseloads are the same. I don't see increases fed teachers, I don't see behavior interventionists. I don't see what we need for these kids. And it's not about being compliant, it's about giving the kids the services they're entitled to, to be successful adults. These are kids that are at risk, these are the ones that have ugly future. These are the ones that we need to take time and say, this is an issue, and let's fix it. So I think that is all I have. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Sydney Scarborough.
I'm going to pass out a timeline to you guys, sorry. I'm Sydney Scarborough, address 239 Castle Lane, Dover, Tennessee. When we get done, I'll pass out a timeline to each of you. It's important to note that I'm speaking today as an ambassador of several parents that have concerns. We've talked, either they couldn't come to the meeting tonight or they didn't want to speak publicly, but I am speaking for several parents tonight. On the timeline, I plan to show you how this unfolded in regards to the supposed hitless threat situation from the parent's perspective. After that, I intend to go over some points on how communication on possible threats or perceived threats can be improved upon in the future. On August 16th, the first we heard of the situation was from Facebook post of a concerned parent looking for answers from other parents despite curiosity and a need for answers and response that would make us feel secure in knowing our children would be safe. The concerned parent phone tree was activated. Less than an hour later, the school system posted on their Facebook page, which vaguely described a threat while simultaneously trying to give reassurance. The problem is that Facebook, that Facebook post substantiated that there was indeed a threat, which left parents vying for more information to ensure their children's safety. Because at this point, there were rumors flying that multiple people could have been involved in whatever the threat was. At 8:36 on August 17th, the next day, the mayor had wrote a post saying that there was a school shooter threat, which once again left parents feeling scared and left out without any answers. Approximately 30 minutes later, the Dover Police Department also released a statement that there was a threat against the school. We still do not have answers, and for parents who do not live on Facebook, this was when they found out about the supposed threat for the first time, which caused a large amount of discomfort and a push for answers. Facebook is a community forum, which is where parents reached out trying to find answers, any answers whatsoever, since they had been provided with absolutely no answers at this point. Stewart County Schools released a statement at approximately the same time as the police department via social media and the call system. This statement claimed that a call was not made the night before due to the late hours and spread of misinformation. The sheriff's office too made a post two hours after the schools, which gave slightly more information, but still left out, left a lot to question. Go on to see the circulation of a dismissal of parent concern from a school admin as well as public comments of students and parents in distress, kids who had not been informed of why they are safe or how they are safe moving forward. The truth is, is that parents do not like to be in the dark about their child's safety. These are humans that we have given everything for. We are now 24 days from the initial threat and have yet to hear from our school system anything substantial. We are now twenty-four days from the initial threat and have yet to hear from our school system anything substantial regarding what happened. The way this was handled, or not handled, has caused a lot of damage within the community regarding comfort, trust, and respect. I believe that the night of August sixteenth, what was written on the social media page should have been sent out immediately to the parents in order to mitigate rumors. This would have given us confidence that you were ahead of the situation. When social media is covered in a, covered in a spread of misinformation, then contact us and give us the truth. Even if it's a few plucks of information and an assurance of the situation being handled, don't blame the spread of misinformation on why you didn't communicate. Start with that, then update us on the situation as the situation progresses, the next day or the next week. Release a statement to the newspaper. Communicate. The majority, sorry, the majority of parents just want to be kept in the loop. And that's our right, it's the people who pour our heart and souls into our children. We need to do better for when there is a real threat. Reach out as quickly as possible, even if the investigation is ongoing. Reach out to tell us the investigation is ongoing. It is not enough to allow eleven hours to pass for students to already be on campus before producing a school outreach phone call. I believe that this did more harm than good, as it made parents feel as though our children and our concerns for our children's safety are not your top priority. This is the concern for many parents right now. It's not enough to be safe. Our children have to feel safe.
Thank you.
All right, item number six. Recognize Mr. Robert Beecham.
Thank you.
We wanted to, as a school board and a school system, we wanted to, you come up here, our newly-elected mayor, for your service on the school board from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-two. We wanted to say thank you for your service. It's been a pleasure to work with you. Louie's done a lot for our school system even before he became a school board member as an SRO. And I know his heart is always in what's best for our system, and on behalf of the school board, we want to present you with this.
All right, item number seven is the report on bus drivers. I was asked last, last big meeting, the discussion about school bus drivers and what their concerns are in terms of getting bus drivers, keeping bus drivers. We, we, when I say we, I'm talking about the Mr. Watkins and Mr. Gwynn, our finance director. We've met twice with concerned bus drivers. I just want to give an update on some of the things that we're trying to do to, and this is an ongoing process. I believe that we're going to have to, I even asked somebody, I said, what would it take to get more? How much can we offer as an incentive? And I don't know if there's a dollar amount that you can put on it. But I, I would like to talk to you about some things that we have, that we've done already to help with the bus driver shortage. We have increased the sound bonus for drivers from four hundred dollars to five hundred, and we're even starting adding more to that. Because that's, you know, if we put a thousand dollars out there, you're probably not going, still not going to have a, a large amount of people apply for these jobs. When a bus driver applies for a job and they start their CDL training, we increased their pay from ten dollars an hour to fifteen dollars an hour. We reinstated attendance bonus this year, and we just upped it to a hundred and fifty dollars per month. Extra, which if they have perfect attendance all ten months, it would be another fifteen hundred dollars per year. Just so everybody understands, our, our current pay for bus drivers is in the range between eighteen and twenty-two dollars per hour. And that's dependent on years of experience. So we're trying our best to be competitive in our wages, and we just agreed to allow any bus driver who wants to work between routes, may do so, but they can't go over the forty-hour a week limit. We don't have any employees who work, that are hourly, that work over forty hours. They can apply for posted positions as long as those, that will work out with the schedule that the principals need in the schools. So right now, according to Mr. Watkins, we're short four drivers. We have three drivers come out of retirement, like they said earlier, and I appreciate those drivers who are doing that. That's really helped us out. We, we have a waiver from the state because we are in a critical situation where we have to have, so one route has to go longer than ninety minutes, which is not what we want. But it's the only way that we can get everybody to school without canceling routes. And basically, those are the things that we are working on or we've already done. I'll continue, we'll continue to, to come up with ways to try to get more people that want to drive. Anybody here that's in the public that wants to drive a bus, we have, we have an opportunity for you. So I'll take any questions you have, members.
Mike, on some of the things that we do, you were talking about. Are we just talking about, are we moving forward, moving forward in front of the?
The, as far as working in between routes, they're allowed to do that now. We just implemented that.
What about that one lady you're talking about, four, four or three? Four subs, four additional people working.
If they, if they, if they want, if they want to sub between the routes, we are allowing it up to forty hours a week.
Yes.
So they can do that, yes.
Is that, is that forty additional hours or forty total?
Forty hours total.
So what, what are they working a week on a bus? Twenty hours?
Fifteen, if you say.
They're paid by the day. And it's usually between three to four hours. Some people have a little bit longer, but between the, between the inspections and so forth, they, they figure it at three hours a day.
So it comes down to they can work three and a half, three and a half hours a day?
Mr. Watkins, I mean, some people are, do you figure it at three hours a day?
Well, their time sheets, their time sheets say three hours. That's what it's always said, the last thirty-five years anyway. And some of them are putting in more time than that, that not really getting paid for.
Well, that's, that's a question I have. Are they able to drive two routes a day, do the inspections, and clean up in three hours? And is that due?
Some of them can, some of them can't. You, you, if you live in Cumberland City and Indian Mountain, that you can't do it. You know, the route in Cumberland, in Indian Mountain, taking nearly two hours, a trip, so. So that's four hours on the road without doing the inspections and.
Are they being paid for every minute of that, or they go back down to thirty?
They, they, they're, they're getting paid like everybody else.
Benefits being offered to any of them, or are we?
If they, on the lookback period, if they work forty hours, average forty hours a week, they will be qualified for benefits.
And how long is that lookback period?
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
So it's just starting. I mean, the clock started when we started allowing them to come in and sub and additional hours on top of it. They can, they can work forty hours a week.
Or if they apply for and receive a position, that's probably going to guarantee them this forty hours a week.
We don't want them to do that. We want them to drive buses.
Well, no, it's together we're driving a bus. We're also allowing them, if they want to apply and, and they, and they get a job within the system, if the principal wants them in their building, because they, they make those decisions on what age to hire.
Do, do we post positions that are only two and a half days a week?
No. That's what we would have to work out. I mean, we would have to work those things out.
Eric, would you clarify that you've got several outrunings that are taking longer and are not getting paid even though it's taking longer?
They're, they're getting, they're saying paid, but it's taking longer.
That needs to be addressed.
So basically, you're saying that they're salaried, you know, more or less.
So they're getting?
They're having to work, but they're not getting paid for it.
Is that right? My understanding, that's right?
Well, they're, they're working more than four hours a day.
How many? Did you say ten?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can you round it? How many, ten?
So what's the address of that? I mean, that's, that needs to be addressed. If they're working more hours, I need you to.
And I, I'm still just confused with, with how they can work extra when all these jobs we post are twenty-eight hour jobs.
If they can work it out with the principal and get the job done during that time, they can apply for. We have a number, we only had, I think you did a survey, we only had like four people who were, that are currently driving buses interested in doing that. So they can apply for those jobs. They can also substitute teach, be on our sub list, and they can work up to forty hours on top of whatever hours they're working in transportation. We'll continue to work at it, and I'm, I'm willing to meet with the drivers. We've met twice already with concerned drivers, we'll meet some more. You know, we're looking at different ways to try to incentivize them, more people want to drive a bus. And we do appreciate what they're doing, and we're going, I think we're making some steps forward to try to address these things. As I, as I told them in our meeting, it's not something that can be done overnight and instantly. It's, because even if we had ten drivers apply, it would probably be after Christmas before they'd be certified to drive a bus. I'd love to have ten apply. And we'll find a way to, to make it work financially in terms of, if they work more hours.
Eric, what would you say is the average right now, the bus driver? I mean, I know that you said some can get it done within three hours, or some will.
Well, they're around here in Dover, but it's about forty-five minutes.
Right.
So, you know, he, he's right here in, in, in between the schools, so, you know, the further out you get, the longer the routes are.
So you, you, you're thinking maybe, on average, if you spread it out throughout the county, we're probably looking at four to five hours, is what they're doing.
I would, I would say, I would say a good average would be four.
So the, the bus drivers is driving forty-five minutes, so we're paying for three hours. But the bus drivers is driving four hours, we're going to get, we're going to pay them for the hours.
Well, they all, they all basically get the same thing. They work off the same pay scale. It's a daily rate.
Really, it's, yeah, like you said, it's a daily rate, it's not an hourly rate. We're breaking it down.
It's a daily rate, not an hourly rate.
Right. They're trying to break it down to an hourly rate, to show what they're making, but still, okay.
It shows less on an hourly rate.
Is it thirteen, what's, what's starting out, thirteen thousand five hundred?
Thirteen, three forty.
Three forty. I mean, I, I appreciate y'all putting this on here, and I think this is something like, we've heard, this is something we need to keep an eye on and, and visit pretty often. We all seen on the news that the school in Tennessee, with bus drivers, just stopped. You know, we, we start losing kids to homeschool and not having rides. This affects the whole system in every area. And I know there's a couple that, once, I don't know how, how loyal they are to Mr. Eric, but they're ready to go. They're only staying around because of Mr. Eric over there. We, we are on the verge of, of a potential disaster if we don't address this quick.
And I think that, I think that we're doing that. I think that.
That's what we need to, that's what I think we have to visit this.
Mike and Chris and Eric have all worked hard to try to put some stuff together. It's a work in progress. That's what we can say about it.
Continue, continue to do it, not just let it stop to not continue to do it.
We'll have another update. I mean, we can do that again. I can keep y'all, I mean, we don't have another meeting till November, but we can, I will continue to, to look at ways and we'll crush numbers some more, and, you know, the, it's, it's a, it's a tough situation because I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I'm not surprised because I see it everywhere. And I know we keep saying that, but talking to directors across the state, we're actually in better shape than a lot. That doesn't mean that that's what we want to be. But we're actually a lot of, a lot better than many systems as far as like down in, I think it was Franklin or Lincoln County. They, they, they contract out their buses to a company, and they just went on strike because the company wouldn't pay them. And they, they, county commission had to step up, and they got them back in and paid a bigger contract. But, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the people who do this job because it is a tough job. And they, I hope they know that we appreciate them, and we're going to do everything we can to help them. And, you know, I know we can't take any action tonight, but, you know, as, as far as the sound bonuses and stuff, we've already discussed that. That's probably going to have to be increased again. And like I said, if we increased it to a thousand, doubled it right now, it probably would, I, I don't know if it costs five thousand dollars a year to get new drivers, to pay that incentive. I just don't see the, a whole lot applying for these jobs.
Nobody wants to work for free, so let's make sure that the ones that are really going over, that we come and say those somehow, somehow, some way.
That requires time sheets and a time clock to keep up with, I mean, I think we can do that. That's one thing we can look at.
Eric, in thirty-five years, have you done, have, have we ever had a time clock for bus drivers?
And I know we need more bus drivers, but we need to really work with the ones that we have since they're so good. Because I've always said with the bus driver, that's the first face a child sees when they get on the bus, and that's the last face they see when they get off the bus, and that may be the only smile and the only kind word they have, who knows? I don't know. But it's very, very important to have good bus drivers and be, be aware of it.
And that's what we're going to do.
Thank you.
I can assure you that.
All right, any more discussion? All right, I'm going to move on to item number eight, which is the school safety update by Mr. Delmore, Officer Delmore, oh, sorry, more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity to be placed on the agenda. I'm hoping to take care of a lot of questions tonight. First of all, let me, let me say to the bus drivers, we see them when we're out on the roads, thank you for what you do. You are the first line with our kids, you are the last line of our kids. So you're kind of vulnerable with just a steering wheel in your hand. So anyway, I do appreciate what you do. I want you to know as a school board that obviously, you know, we have SROs for every school. There are a lot of states, there are a lot of counties that do not have an SRO for every school. We've got four good ones. I work with four good SROs. Every one of us, every one of us have been offered twenty thousand more dollars to go to another county. Every one of us. And we have chosen to stay here because we love the kids and we love the county. I want you to know that. It's not a forty-hour week. Each one of us averages probably close to a hundred or more hours every week while school is in. So every one of us is trained. We've done our training this, through the summer. You know, we had to skip vacations, I know I did too, to be trained. The weapons that we have gotten and received, we've been trained on those. That will help us just in case there is an intruder of some sort. So I, I want the board to know that. We are doing safety precautions and measures and daily doing those, such as door checks and people coming into our schools. It's a lot harder. Parents are not going to like it, I'm just going to tell them. It's just going to be harder to get in our schools. Delivery drivers, it's hard for them to get into our schools just because we've got blocks. You've got to go through phases to get in our schools. My own daughter, my own daughter, I was knocking at the door, she would not let me in. Me, her dad, in uniform, would not let me in. So anyway, we're training them right, so not to open the door for anybody. So I want you to know that we're, we're on it. We're dedicated to our schools and to our kids. So I want you to feel, rest assured, are we going to do everything right? We're not. We're going to make mistakes. We put our life on the line every day that we shoot up, not knowing what corner, what door, we're going to come across or turn. Maybe a bad student, maybe a bad parent, maybe just somebody random. We don't know. But that's what we live in every day. So I want you all to keep those things in mind. So I want you all to keep those things in mind. Mr. Chairman, I have been misquoted, I have been questioned about this incident that has continued to mushroom after three weeks. So I'm here to set the record straight. Several calls have been made, I want to speak to the guy, well, I'm that guy. So it was me. So maybe no mistake about it. Officer Morgan, the other Officer Morgan, well, not him, but I guess everybody, he's my big brother, I guess. But anyway, he and I took care of the situation, and I'm here to explain that. And if you as a board have any questions thereafter, I know there have been a lot of roundtable discussions and talks with Mr. Craig, the SRO's, communication gaps that we need to fill in, that's been, been worked on, and we're going to try to do a little bit better job. But as far as the incident, to begin with, this is the second type of incident that has taken, been taken care of by the SRO, Morgan and myself, the second. The biggest difference, not hardly anyone knew the first one, quite opposite of too many thinking they knew the second. Knowing a situation and knowing other situations are two completely different things. Incorrect information, false information, information created to cause fear. We have to sort through all this information, whether true, false, correct, or incorrect, to maintain safety. For example, twelve shooters versus twelve girls. Other, two other counties were put on lockdown due to the false information. They called me early in the morning. By the way, after the incident was taken care of, I stayed up twenty-nine states straight hours answering calls from other schools and parents and everybody else that wanted to know about the situation. So it wasn't just one and done, it was two and done, and we took care of the situation. So what I want to tell you is that SRO Morgan and I did to correct the false information, all the know-it-alls that were not there, shut the rumor mill down and the unsafe practices down. SRO Morgan reported to me, Sergeant Morgan, I'm sergeant of all the SROs, that an inappropriate list had been given to a female high school student and there were concerns. SRO Morgan said he was going to the female's home to see and retrieve the inappropriate list. SRO Morgan arrived, no photocopy list was ever given, however, an inappropriate list was sent to her via social media. I do not know who else circulated the inappropriate list across social media, I did not find that out. It was not the original sender. However, it was social media avalanche that we had to deal with, and we continue to do so. No one ever said that there was not a list. I was never told that it was a hit list, other than an inappropriate list that brought concern. SRO Morgan quickly found out who the inappropriate list came from, and he called me. We quickly put a plan together, and when SRO Morgan would be back in town, I shared the information immediately with Director Mike Craig of what the SR, of what SRO Morgan had found out and what we were going to do. Shortly after the conversation with Director Craig, I received another call from the school personnel that the student in question may be walking near Sandy Road in Dover on Highway seventy-nine. I immediately called dispatcher, see who was on for the city. Dispatcher said that we had one going off and Ricky Smith was on. I thanked them, I said I would call Ricky. I did call Ricky, and I told him where the student was. There was no massive manhunt, there were no guns involved, there were no safety issues for the officers that I knew of. I asked to detain the student if it was the student in question. I would be there, I arrived within ten minutes. Officer Ricky did detain the student, he searched him for his safety and for the student's safety and placed him in his patrol unit. Officer Ricky did find about a twelve to sixteen inch long piece of rebar that he had found while he was walking on the road. SRO Morgan arrived shortly after I did, and we are now on Park Hill. The student was removed from Officer Ricky's unit and placed in my patrol unit. There, the student was spoken with and asked to explain the list he sent to the female student by myself and SRO Morgan. The student admitted that he had sent the inappropriate list, and he was very sorry that he sent it. He explained the list, it was not a hit list, but more of a list of selected girls he wanted to take with him to Tokyo, Japan. The dates on the bottom were flight dates. The wanted word at the top, that was not a wanted poster, but it was more of an invitation to go with this young man. Yes, he did sign it to Death Assassin. This was his gamer name, simply that, he just signed it as gamer name. This inappropriate list was never a hit list, never a hit list, especially easily perceived as such, but not so. From the time I was informed about the incident, the student in question was, was taken care of, the inappropriate list was retrieved, and he was detained within twenty-two minutes of my notification. The threat, quote unquote, was eliminated in twenty-two minutes. However, for the next twenty-nine hours, I answered texts, calls to plates, people coming to my house in the wee morning hours wanting to know about the list, twelve shooters, security plans, why I wasn't informed, and mostly all of them rooted in nature. We did our jobs and we did it quickly, not once, but twice. Bottom line for me, issue was taken care of, but after a week, it still hasn't and wasn't, and the questions still come. It's a juvenile matter. Juvenile matters are protected by law. Procedures, practices, and policies were all in place, and the incident was taken care of that day. Not that night, but that day. I found a need to share what, what really happened because of the social media blowup. We all know it was not social media per se, it's people on their keyboards or cell phones who mostly want to stir instead of being swift to help. There are, there was no threat or threats made. Thank you. If you have any questions or comments, I will take them from the board this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can assure you that we take our job serious, and we will react. May not be perfect all the time, but we will react in a manner to keep our kids safe and our staff and administration staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Sergeant Morgan, we, we all realize what you do, what you and your officers do, and we really appreciate all the time and consideration that you put into it. You can tell the passion that you have for the children's safety in our schools, and it's palpable. So I applaud you, I appreciate you, and we'll continue to pray for you. Any other questions? All right, item number nine is the approval of minutes from August eleventh, twenty twenty-two. You have those in your packets, you received them last week. Is there any corrections or objections? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Lamb. All those in favor say yes? Yes. Those opposed, no? Yes, as have it. All right, the next item is item number ten, the consent agenda.
These are, the first part of these are all fundraisers that have been put in. Most of them have to do with middle school, they're in, you probably know that they are in a process of trying to buy electronic sign, so they've been heavily fundraising. There were two asterisks that were added late, that's my fault. One is the baseball, it's middle school, have a new coach, and I think he got a little behind on getting his fundraiser in, and then the electronic sign T-shirt that was given to me a few weeks ago that I forgot to sign and get to Stacy, but I approve all these. The other ones are field trips that are overnight trips for our CTE groups, and these are traditional trips that they take every year.
Is there any questions?
Motion approved. Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Gill. All those in favor say yes? Yes. Those opposed, no? Yes, as have it. All right, item number eleven is approval of FY twenty-three budget amendments.
These, these amendments are all federal in nature, and Dr. Duncan, would you like to speak to them?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. There are several of those. The first two are SR two and SR three, and pretty much they're the amendments to cover the spending plan that was approved at the August board meeting. SR two, that's to cover the one-time five percent bonus to all employees. And then the SR three was just to meet what was in the spending plan from August. And the third amendment is the physical pre-monitoring supports grant, that's just carryover money from FY twenty-one. The third one was, or the fourth one was the literacy teacher stop-in grant, that's to pay teachers for attending reading three sixty train this past summer that was provided by the state teachers. We had twenty-five teachers attend, they get a thousand dollar stop-in, the state reverses us for that. And then we had an amendment to the CTE budget, Ms. Baggett, that's the next to last one. And then the last one was the math implementation support grant, that's our two-year grant where we work for the vendor to work with math instruction in the district. So that's, that's what that is, that's year one of the support grant. So any questions you have, we'll be happy to ask, answer.
Any questions? You get a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second by Mr. Dacus. Can you get a roll call?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Bitu? Yes. Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, item number twelve is surplus items. We had a tree fall on the bus, totally correct.
And we told the bus, so we're going to surplus, sell it and give it, we can get out there and put it on garbage.
Any questions?
Two thousand eleven Thomas bus, if anybody's interested.
Answer a question.
Two thousand eleven, it's about to go out of service, I think, in the next couple of years.
Can you get a motion to surplus?
I'm not a motion.
Motion by Ms. Bitu.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dillon. Can you get a roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Dacus?
Yes.
Ms. Bitu?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
All right, item thirteen is the director of enforcement.
Hey, a few things, I know we had some bumps in the road, and we had some, had a kind of a crazy start to the year against what Officer Morgan was referring to. I want to reiterate how much I appreciate our SROs. Folks, we, anything safety-wise, I can reassure you, Dell Morgan and myself, twenty-four hours a day, anytime, any day of the week, he knows he can call, and I can call him, and we coordinate everything. I hope everybody understands that in that incident, if there was a true threat to anybody, I would call school off. And, you know, we called school off for a lot of things, and if a child was in danger or in danger, that would have been done. And did we do it handling it perfect? No. But we're going, we're going to do better. And that's all I can ask of anybody. If anybody's perfect, then they need to, they need to come on and, and do, do the job that these people, we've asked them to do. Besides that, school year, I think, has been got to a good start. Our kids seem happy, teachers are working hard, I'm in the buildings every day, a lot of great things are going on in the current county schools. We have great staff, great kids, and great parents. You know, really, last week, not this week, but last week, I was talking to our staff at the board office, it seems like we're kind of normal again. And that's what I would like, I hope we continue to do that, and it takes everybody. And, and if, and if, anytime there's things that, that are out there that we need to, need to work on, we need to be made aware of. But we do want to get better all the time. And so basically, that's all I have, and I appreciate, again, that everybody's coming out tonight, and we'll, that's it.
All right. So you guys got anything else they want to bring?
Eric, I'd just like to say thank you for, for holding things together. And we appreciate that.
That's what we get paid for.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Got a motion to adjourn by Ms. Sanders. Second by Mr. Gill. All those in favor say yes? Yes. Those opposed, no?